They had half of the waffles. And they had the chicken and waffles. Something else later said, "This chicken is almost as good as the one I cooked." He said, "It's my try."
Oh, what time was it? No, I'm sorry.
The service was fantastic.
How about that?
It was fantastic.
How are you?
Good.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, January 28, 2013, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is mayor's public announcements. And I was not there. I'd like to thank Alderman Wynn for handling the gigabit celebration. But I'd like to personally thank Governor Quinn, who told me that Evanston and Northwestern should apply for gigabits. That was a time when I didn't know what a gigabit was. But I said we would definitely apply for them. And now that I know what they are and they're coming, I'm delighted. And we owe Governor Quinn a thank you. The other piece of good news is that Harry Belafonte is in town. Harry Belafonte apparently ate at Chicken and Waffles. And I talked with him afterwards, and he said it is an excellent restaurant. So, being the mayor, I would not like to miss an opportunity to plug an Evanston restaurant. That concludes my public announcement. City manager, do you have announcements?
Just a brief announcement. Many of you know Godwin Chin, our local government management fellow. Godwin is being reassigned and is leaving that role and is going down to our Economic Development Division to help support that staff. And just want to take this opportunity to thank Godwin for the last year and a half of helping out at these meetings and on many different community projects and wish him all the best as he transitions to our Economic Development Division.
Yay!
And that's my only announcement.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a few. First of all, I want to announce the death of Pat Vance's mother. She died on Friday, and we just want to wish the family our best wishes and that she will make it through this grieving period at this moment. The other thing I want to let you know that all candidates who are running for the April 9 consolidated election, you can now put your flyers and posters out, but make sure you do not put them on the freeway. Was it freeway?
Parkway.
Parkway. Don't put them.
For the freeway. Either one. Yeah, go put them on the freeway.
Don't put them on the parkway. You can put them on private property. And now that the law has changed, you can keep it up there as long as you want, as long as it's on private property. That means you can put them up today, keep them till 2077. That's all my announcements for the day.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is citizen comment. If someone has the sign-up list, thank you very much, Mr. Lyons. Thank you. Would you each please come up and give your name and address? And each speaker has three minutes. The first three are Paul Selden, John Zuster. How do you? Zuster. Sorry, John. And John O'Donny. Donald. You all did not get good handwriting instruction at school. Go ahead, Paul.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm here tonight to actually speak out against the substantial amendment being proposed to NSP-2. In the original proposal, the city made a promise to the federal government and citizens of Evanston that with their NSP-2 money, they would commit whatever was needed to produce 50 units of rental housing for people under 50 percent of the area median income. In the new proposal, they're proposing to produce 32 units rather than 50. And only four of them will be for people or households with incomes under 50 percent of area median incomes. The others will be for people from 50 to 60 percent of area median. So I confess, I find this somewhat mystifying. It's not that there isn't an affordability problem for people in that range of 50 to 60. It's rather that there is not nearly as large an affordability problem for that group as there is for the people under 50 percent of area median. Let me say a brief word about affordability. The federal government currently considers housing costs, that's rent together with utilities, affordable when those costs don't exceed 30 percent of a person's or a household's income. When they do exceed 30 percent, that's called rent burden. And when they exceed 50 percent, that's called an extreme rent burden. So I'm going to focus on households with extreme rent burdens, because these are the ones that sooner or later will become homeless, and that's what concerns me. According to the department's own figures, there are 2,937 households in Evanston with incomes under 50 percent of AMI with extreme rent burdens. And there are 319 households with incomes over 50 percent with extreme rent burdens. So that's 3,000 on the one hand and 300 on the other. Ten to one. The planning team should, of course, be applauded for having put this proposal through. But in reducing their target from 50 units to four units for that segment of the Evanston housing market that clearly has the greatest need of support, there's something fundamentally wrong. So think about it. $18 million has come into this town to deal with the affordability issue. And of that, only $750,000 is being put towards the targeted population that the proposal initially set out. And the language in the original proposal is 25 percent of NSP-2 funds received will benefit households with incomes at or below 50 percent of AMI. So let's do what we set out to do. Commit to producing 50 units and commit to producing them for households with incomes under 50 percent of AMI. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Zuster.
Thank you. I'll improve my handwriting.
Thank you.
So I'm here again to talk in favor of the TIF proposal for Chicago Avenue and Main Street. By this time, we know all the arguments up and down about this. Just wanted to add something else at this point. The word currency comes from the Latin word currans, which means to run or to flow. And this is an important connection in terms of economy, is that money needs to circulate. And if it doesn't circulate, an economy stagnates and is no longer an economy. This TIF proposal, I think, will act as a primer for a currency that will jump to a different level than we've experienced in Main Street, Chicago Avenue. It's really a gift that's being offered to us. For years, those of us in the business district have wanted more interaction from the city of Evanston, and now we have it. And we have a lot of support, and we have a lot of interaction, and we have a lot of cooperation, a lot of communication. I just think that it's odd for us to say to this proposal and all of the things that will follow, "No, thanks. We can do it ourselves." I think it's really critical that we in our district take advantage of this situation. So already, we see that there is benefit. When circulation starts to happen, it attracts more circulation. It attracts more capital. It attracts more interest. It attracts status. So the mayor has already mentioned the money that was awarded to Evanston for the gigabit Internet project. Hopefully, it will be centered in the Main Street, Chicago Avenue district. We also see on the agenda that there's a vote for a transportation-oriented development study, which also is part of this whole look at Main Street and Chicago Avenue. I have a lot of experience with the railroads. They like projects that succeed, and they like to know ahead of time that it's going to succeed before they invest in it. And I'm pretty certain that once this money starts to circulate and we see the changes, that the easy applications that they have to make for federal and state funding will start to happen for us as well. I think that these are all realities, and that can happen. And I like the way our future looks with this proposal. What I would hope in my idealism is that your vote today on this is unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you. John? There you are.
Thank you. I want to apologize for my handwriting. My brother wanted me to be a doctor. My name's John O'Donnell. I'm the sponsor of the proposed development at Main and Chicago, so I wanted to speak a little bit to that. I've worked with city officials now for about two years planning this and planning a public-private partnership for an office building on that site. It's got a number of characteristics that are superior. You know, the location of the transportation adjacent to both the L and the metro line make it a unique quality. I think there's only five places in the whole state that have those two things meeting at the same time. What this enables is young people, technology-oriented people and young professionals who live in the city neighborhoods to use public transportation to get to this location. At the same time, executives from the North Shore can come and meet at this particular spot. You may have noted that most of -- there's very few, if any, developments of office buildings in the suburbs of Chicago. Really, none in Chicago either for the last seven years. But the reason for this is that there's a number of tenants, large corporations that are moving to the center of the city to be near that transportation hub. Sarah Lee and Motorola could be examples of that, as well as United Airlines. This has that already. And what is needed and we're committed to doing would be to provide a really state-of-the-art office building utilizing all the technology that didn't exist prior to the 1990s, when the Internet age first started and the way people use office space changed. So, you know, we have -- I've been involved in a number of developments that have adapted to that addition higher technology requirement. And I could go through a list of those things if it would be helpful. But we plan on putting it here, and I think it'll be the only place in Evanston. I'm quite confident that it'll have this kind of technology. So we'll have transportation, technology, access to workers, and I'm quite confident with this public-private partnership, we can make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steve Rogan, Hugh Bartling, and Bob Brower.
Good evening. I represent the ownership of the Varsity Theater. I just have two short comments regarding the report that was recently published. First off, there's a comment in there that the ownership would not furnish plans. I'd like you to know that that's an absolutely incorrect statement. I was asked on two different occasions to furnish plans. I furnished my business card and was never contacted following that. Secondly, there was a figure thrown out that to redevelop the varsity would be one and a half to two times more expensive on a per-square-foot basis. I think you should know that I've had two extensive meetings over the last three or four years with architects, one of which probably firm has renovated over 100 theaters across the country, one locally, and both of them indicated that the cost would be somewhere between $350 and $550 a square foot. So you may want to just keep that in context as you evaluate the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Brower, and I'm at 800 Elgin Road here in Evanston. I've asked Judy to pass out a spreadsheet that I've developed, but I want to speak against the Carroll Apartments, the apartments on Emerson between Oak and Maple. At the Planning and Development Committee meeting, I mentioned my three reasons. I have a fourth now, and that I'll explain as everybody gets the spreadsheet. One, I oppose because we've lost additional shopping and retail space. Two, because the project is out of character with the neighborhood. That building will dwarf everything surrounding the area. And three, because 78 percent of the units are small units, either studio or one bedroom, not necessarily family units. And I'm a strong supporter that and believer that in Evanston, we need families, not transients. And I'm concerned about that. What I did then, at the Planning and Development Meeting two weeks ago, a woman passed out some photographs, some of you remember seeing them, of the congestion on University. And I began to think about that, and I thought to myself, what more will this building do in the way of congestion? And I thought about the amount of movement in and out of a building, where you have renters, you have people moving in and out a lot more than you do when you have ownership in the way of condos or homes or any other kind of ownership property. So I investigated five different units to compare them with the Carroll development. The three units at the top, the Horizons, the Views, and the Reserve. The Reserve is the apartment building on the corner of Emerson and Ridge. And then I called the developers of the Amley Project on Chicago and Kedzie and the 1717 Ridge Project to get more information. And I want to walk you through just the first one, so you make sure that you understand the figures. In the Horizons condominium, there are 245 units. 44 percent, or 107 of those units, are rental units. And the rental units, 50 percent of the rental units are rented by students. The standard lease in that building is two years. And the turnover, that is, the amount of people who stay beyond their lease, is really two years also. So what that means is that 170 of those units will vacate every two years, or 56 units will -- people will move out. And of course, for every move out, there's also a move in. So if 56 units turnover, we're talking about, in the last column, 107 moves, meaning moving vans or trailers or whatever it is. Now, the data is fairly consistent. Students move in, as you can see in the Horizon Views and Reserves. The lease arrangement is typically one year. Horizons is two years, but rental units are typically one year. So that when we look at Carroll Project with 368 apartments, if there's a turnover in a two-year period, that means 122 vacancies. And it means a move out and a move in, so that we're talking about 244 moves. That move is going to be on University between Maple and Oak and Railroad. If it's a two-year turnaround, and we don't know because the apartment isn't up yet, but we can make projections on the basis of what's in the neighborhood and what other managers have told us. If it's a two-year turnaround in Carroll, that means 368 moves per year. That's a lot of moves. That's a lot of congestion. And I think it needs some consideration. There was a lot of talk at the Planning and Development Meeting about the traffic on Emerson, and people talked about stoplights and talked about no parking. But there was very little concern about what will happen on University. And so that's what I want to bring to your attention. I'm also.
I do need you to wrap up.
I suggest that you investigate this situation. You don't need to take my figures for this. I think it behooves the council to look into this matter rather than accepting the plan this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Hugh?
Good evening. My name's Hugh Bartling. I'm a member of the Environment Board. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Environment Board, but this pertains to the Carroll Place Apartments as well. We've been working on enhancing the bike infrastructure and supporting all the efforts of the council and the city that you've done for the past few years. When we were reading the transportation evaluation, or when I was reading the transportation evaluation study for the Carroll Place Apartments, the consultant for the developer suggests that Emerson be transformed into a four-lane road from Ridge to Sherman, I believe. And as you all probably know, in the multimodal transportation plan, that area is a designated bike route, and it's also been tagged as a place where shared bike lanes, or what they call charros, arrows on the pavement, should be installed. The consultant's report indicates that their traffic suggestions would not be compliant with that MMTP. So I just want, as you guys going forward, to try and figure out exactly what the impacts are going to be on bicycle and also pedestrian safety as that road, if it does indeed get widened. I don't think the traffic numbers that even the consultant presents would justify that widening. But if the road is widened, generally, that results in more safety hazards for pedestrians and cyclists. So that's just what I wanted to bring up.
Thank you very much. Next, we have BK Rao and Padma Rao. I'm sorry, Steve. Steve Ross, then BK Rao and Padma Rao.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the City Council. I am Steve Ross, Executive Vice President of Development for Amley Residential. As most of you know, Amley is developer of the new 214-unit mixed-use transit-oriented community, which will open in April on Chicago and Kedzie. The project's amenities include fitness center, internet cafe, ample indoor parking, yoga studio, rooftop deck, and bicycle storage. Most notable, Amley Evanston is completely smoke-free community and is designed to lead Silver Standard. Amley Evanston is one of the largest private investments ever in the Chicago Avenue corridor. Tonight, I want to express our general support for the proposed redevelopment plan in Tax Increment Finance District. Amley understands the city of Evanston's primary interest in using tax increment financing is to stimulate commercial development in the Chicago Avenue, Main Street area. We are supportive of a TIF for that use, because more jobs and economic development in the area will help create demand for residential apartments like those at Amley Evanston. We are also excited about the prospect of infrastructure improvements in the TIF district, including the metro and CTA right-of-way, water and sewer line replacements, lighting, open space, beautification and landscaping, and super-high-speed broadband connections that will ensure that Evanston residents and businesses have access to the most effective communication and learning tools. I understand that Evanston has a positive history in using TIFs for public improvements that have then accelerated private investment in targeted areas. As a major investor in this neighborhood, Amley looks forward to partnering with the city in the years ahead as the Chicago Avenue corridor continues to become an even more desirable place to live and for commercial ventures. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
My mother was unable to attend the meeting this evening. She has given me her comments to read into the record. Her name is BK Rao of 2246 Sherman. Her comments are as follows. "My comments were approved by my attorney. I had asked my daughter to read my comments at the last meeting. The video shows that you interrupted her. I submit that you are disgracing your office by exhibiting such disregard for freedom of speech. My daughter and I told the council that oxygen depletion and carbon dioxide buildup make the air unhealthy for all of us. Put a bag over your head and try to breathe. You cannot prove us wrong. The air is constantly purified by our tall, green friends, known as mature trees. I submit that when you thoughtlessly voted to chop down the life-sustaining trees at Kendall, then you voted to harm our neighborhood, our Evanston." Kendall, then you voted to harm our neighborhood, our Evanston, and our world. I submit that you failed in your fiduciary responsibility." I'm not a fan of celebrities, and lately, the Armstrong story is all over the news. I submit that there are similarities in the way some celebrities and politicians create myths about themselves through manipulation and bullying. When the truth finally came out, the idea that Armstrong always stayed positive became a pun, and Liv Strong sounded like Lie Strong. I submit that we should all be bothered by the bullying and mistreatment of those who tell the truth. The Eighth Ward Woman antagonized Viola, as well as Ms. Davies, and both cited her conduct as part of the basis for their lawsuits against the city. Your legal employee may tell you what you want to hear, but that does not reduce the burden to taxpayers of costly lawsuits resulting from the unacceptable and unnecessary words and deeds of a public official. Ms. Tisdall, stop violating my constitutional rights. Stop further disgracing the office that once belonged to Mayor Lorraine Morton. I shall return." That concludes my mother's comments. Now my own comments. Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. "My comments were approved by my attorney. At your January 14 meeting, your mayor violated the First Amendment again by interrupting public comment to claim that taxpayers cannot state their opinions about public officials. I submit that if the mayor believed this claim, then she would also forbid opinions praising public officials, instead of trying to silence only minorities with whom she disagrees. The U.S. Supreme Court held in Brown v. Entertainment Merchants Association and in Snyder v. Phelps that the First Amendment protects the right to state opinions about public issues and government, regardless of how much public officials disagree, and regardless of any alleged majority dislike of minority views. The High Court condemned content-based and speaker-based discrimination as unconstitutional. Judge Shader's ruling in Vergara v. City of Waukegan also held that discrimination based on speakers and content is unconstitutional, and that a mayor was personally liable for committing such civil rights violations during public comment. Your Eighth Ward member documented her animus against Viola in your own video record at ANPW on August 8, 2011. I submit the following: that a competent lawyer would know that this is a fact supported by evidence; that a competent lawyer would know that the legally correct answer to an allegation is to admit or deny it under oath; that a competent lawyer would know that intimidating a speaker during public comment is unconstitutional and may be criminal; and that a competent lawyer would spare taxpayers' costly lawsuits by preventing illegal acts by public officials, instead of wasting more tax dollars on cover-ups. The First Amendment guarantees the right to petition public officials for redress, as well as the right to reject governments' whitewash. We opposed this council's vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason, and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. The city code requires tree protection and traffic safety, but you voted without discussing any taxpayer concerns. The public record includes a letter from the developer's lawyer stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city. The public record shows that tens of thousands of tax dollars were paid to Holland and Knight to represent the city in various matters. Such double representation is forbidden by Illinois Supreme Court rules, but you did nothing to protect taxpayers and their money. The public record shows that your First Ward Member's son works for Holland and Knight, and the Evanston Patch—
Israel, we have been over this, and the ethics community has ruled—
It is in the public record. Private citizens do not have to accept governments' whitewash. We are allowed to speak our opinion about facts and issues that affect us. The public record shows that your First Ward Member's son works for Holland and Knight, and the Evanston Patch reported that your First Ward Member was overheard assuring the developer's lawyer that your vote would be pushed through no matter what taxpayers say. The U.S. Supreme Court condemned such conflicts of interest and action in Nevada Commission on Ethics versus Kerrigan. Stop violating taxpayers' rights. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Protect the Kendall trees."
That concludes public comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Should we have the special order?
Oh, I suppose we should. What a good idea.
Madam Mayor, members—
City manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As you know, we have recently concluded a study of potential sites for downtown performing arts facilities. Dennis Marino, our manager of planning and zoning, is here. Dennis, do you want to provide just a brief introduction of the consultants that provided the work? We'll give a brief overview and answer any questions. Mr. Marino.
Thank you. Good evening. Dennis Marino, manager of planning and zoning for the city. It's my pleasure to introduce the presentation of the Downtown Evanston Performing Arts Study, done by HBR Architects and its subcontractors who are here tonight. This study was funded by the National Endowment for the Arts. They provided $50,000 in funding, which was matched by the City of Evanston, for a total of $100,000. The purpose tonight is a presentation and an opportunity for questions from council members. There is no action requested at this time. This is a planning study at this point, a planning study done by a very talented consulting team. And with that, let me introduce Dennis Rupert of HBR Architects, HBR-A Architects.
Thank you, Dennis. We appreciate the opportunity to present the study that we completed earlier this year with me tonight. And our team that conducted the study was made up of HBR-A Architects, myself, Dennis Rupert, Emily Ray, and Eric Lasher, who are here tonight, and Schuler and Shook Theater Planners, Todd Hensley, who is here. In addition, the financial component of the study was done by the Arts Consulting Group, and the cost estimating was done by CCS Cost Systems. So what we would like to do tonight is just give you a brief overview of the study and have an opportunity to answer any of your questions. The study was completed over a five-month period, from June through October. It grew out of an earlier study that was done for the Varsity Theater that recognized the need for a more comprehensive view of fulfilling the needs of the performing arts groups in and around Evanston, within the downtown area. So our study approach was directed towards those goals. And I'll ask Todd Hensley to speak about the initial components, which was what we call program verification, which really means finding out what the needs were.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Todd Hensley. I'm a partner with Schuler Shook Theater Planners. Our role on this team was to interface with the artists of Evanston and to reach out beyond the City of Evanston to define what are the programmatic needs. A building program is basically a space list. It's a list of what sizes and types of space are required in a building. So our work sort of kicked off the study. We interfaced with over 40 stakeholders in Evanston and in the greater Chicago area. We found a great number of vibrant artistic groups in Evanston. As they were enumerated in the CLUE report, the city helped us identify a great number of stakeholders. We were aware of many of the stakeholders ourselves, and those stakeholders who we interviewed brought forth even further stakeholders. So all in all, we gathered about 40 that we spoke to. What we found was a great need for mid-sized spaces. Now, this may seem somewhat counterintuitive, but what we found were successful artists working in small venues, such as, for example, Next Theater, Impiven Theater, Mudlark Theater. These are companies who are succeeding very well in spaces that are 100 seats, even fewer for Mr. Schostuck with Piccolo. They were doing quite well in these smaller spaces, but need a space that can allow them to grow, to transfer their events to larger venues, and to share in the form of co-productions their greater and growing artistic expression. So we have, as part of the report, sorry, the graphic is pretty small. I'll go through some of these details. Our recommendations to the architect team, then, formed sort of a building block approach. We knew that the architects would go further and study the sites that were available in Evanston, but we had to begin with, what do we want to plan? What are the buildings like? So we took a building block approach that defined, basically, three types of theater buildings that might be studied. The first type is two flexible theaters. A flexible theater, you might call it a black box or a studio theater. I think you've all been to these. They're mobile types of theaters that are really just a big, open space. Lots of theater shapes can be formed in there. Seating capacities can expand and contract based on the goals of the artists. But we heard enough demand in the Evanston artistic community to justify two spaces. And Will and Bronze's work with the Arts Consulting Group bore that out further, as he studied the number of demand nights that a theater group might need. So you can see in the building blocks here, the shapes, the relative shapes and sizes of the spaces sort of indicate the relative size of theaters we're recommending. So in the two flexible theater space, there are two pretty large spaces here. They're accompanied by lobbies. We took our own expertise and filled out the remaining backstage and support spaces, sort of based on the needs we heard from the users, and based on our experience nationally with such theaters. So we offered this as one building to study. The second building focused in on a different type of theater, a fixed-form theater, where the seats are in one place, the stage is in another place, and that's quite defined. We heard that need come through from users who produce dance and who produce music. As you can imagine, those types of users need a little more formality, need a stage with rigging equipment, lighting equipment, curtains, so performers can make entrances and exits. So we expressed that as one fixed-form theater. The third space is quite specific. We spoke with the Northlight Theater, and many of you know that Northlight had its genesis here in Evanston, worked in many different venues, and currently works at the North Shore Performing Arts Center. And Northlight said to us, as part of the study, in no uncertain terms, "We wish to return to Evanston." So we made that our third target building. While they are looking to return, they also stated a new type of theater form they're interested in, which is a flexible theater. So again, Northlight is defined here with a large flexible theater and a smaller, sort of, maybe 100-seat theater that would be their sort of second space. If you're familiar with Steppenwolf's Operations, you would see a second space there as well. There were other spaces that had no distinct affinity to a certain building. They're shown down here, in the sort of free area that might go in many places. We heard the distinct need for rehearsal space. The CLUE report began with this. We certainly heard this echoed over and over. Artists need space to produce their work. So we identified two large rehearsal rooms and one medium-sized rehearsal room that would be available on a rotating basis to all of these artists. We also heard, we need a place to gather. We need our lobbies to be an exciting civic space, and we need enough room to throw a gala. Many of the artists spoke about having difficulty booking a space in Evanston to raise funds for their Evanston-based artistic activities. So we defined a lobby augmentation that could be associated with either one of these building types. Finally, we heard the need for a shared scene shop. Many of these artists are working in very modest facilities, and there's a need for a sort of a common shop that where resources could be shared, common goods could be shared, and even be rented out on a partial basis. So with that, we formed these building blocks. The two flexible theaters, they've worked very well together. One dance-music theater, all of the free-flowing spaces that might go either way, and the architects have studied that in specific ways. And finally, a space for a resident theater company. Now, those are quite different theaters. We have some illustrations here. Sorry, again, they're a bit small. Flexible theaters, you can see from the illustrations here, black boxes are rather malleable. You see some scenery here and seating set up in this case. This particular one is just wide open and has a party available in it. We also recognize that a black box theater doesn't have to be a theater show. It can also be set up for a great party, lots of great lighting and seating ready to throw a party inside the theater. Fixed-form theaters are shown here in the center. We have a school here we're showing. The number of seats involved in these were all, as I said, mid-sized. So this fixed-form theater, we've recommended 400 seats, based on our input from the users. So the Beverly Arts Center, which some of you may know, down on 111th Street, very similar shape and size, fixed stage, small balcony, fixed seating. The resident theater company that we chose to illustrate here is actually Looking Glass Theater, which some of you may know. That's a resident theater. They have prime use of that space, but it is a flexible-form theater. So from our interviews with Northlight, they desire that type of space, where they could change the shape and size, so you don't really know what the theater looks like when you walk in each night. So with all of that input, we were able, then, to deliver this programming information to HBR-A for their site study, and Eric Lasher from HBR-A will go farther with that.
Once we had determined the programmatic needs for this trio of buildings, we then went back to the city to understand what established its characters, what established its boundaries, how it was served by things like public transportation, how it would be accessed, how it can be served by parking, and what kind of amenities and other qualities exist in different parts of the city, how these might benefit from the addition of performing arts venues, or how the introduction of a performing arts district could in turn benefit a less-defined, underserved part of the city. Okay, the boundaries of our study are shown here, and we did examine where things like major parking structures existed, other venues that can support or augment a performing arts facility, like restaurants and public open space. And we then investigated what sites in the downtown area might become available, were currently available, or if they were to become available, would support the requisite services, proximate other uses within the city, or the approximate footprint that these different venues required. So you can see to the left in this column, we have an assortment of sites that we looked at and identified initially. We narrowed down these groups of sites after exploring their suitability for the different venues that we had preliminary configuration, all information for. We took two approaches. Our first approach was to identify three possible districts within the downtown area that could serve as a performing arts district. And that was through discussion with stakeholders and representatives from the city. That was refined to another approach, which incorporated all three of the districts, which we originally identified. One, which we called the Davis Street District, to the west of the elevated and train tracks, could, for example, support any one or all three of the identified venues and could take on its own distinct identity, west of the core of downtown, yet close enough to its amenities, to serve as a recognizable performing arts district. The other district, too, comprised the already extant main commercial core of the city, which the introduction of performing arts venues could reinforce and already had an established presence in the consciousness of the public, and could be further served by the addition of these cultural amenities. District Three was along Chicago and was anchored at the south end by some pre-existing arts institutions, like the Music Institute, and at its north end, by Northwestern University. Within those sites, there were, or within those three districts, we considered a range of available sites that might accommodate the necessary venues. After reconvening with our stakeholders and with representatives from the city, it was decided as a group that, rather than taking one particular portion of downtown and assigning it to the Roll of Arts District, that we establish an arts corridor that would take sites from any of the three previously identified districts, and through populating all three of them, might provide a greater cohesion for the city, promote more movement through and around the center of the downtown area, and establish, for example, a stronger connection to the Northwestern University campus, or an emerging district to the west around Davis We identified different sites within these districts. They were by no means the only sites that can support these venues. They might or might not be available or become available at some point, but they were chosen because of their ability to support what we consider to be an archetypal or prototypical version of the individual venue that we would use, that we would design as part of this study. In this case, the— Uh, in this case, the venue one is on Chicago Avenue. Uh, it is adjacent to the Women's Club and behind the Public Library. It's currently a city-owned parking lot. And this was to support a building which would have probably the largest footprint, uh, of the three that we had studied. This would support two flexible use theaters as well as a lobby of significant size that could be used for events. This represents the building footprint with its frontage on Chicago. Uh, we also showed the Temperance Union Administration Building, which could also be used as an adjunct facility for administrative purposes, uh, for the Performing Arts District. In this case, what you're now seeing here, which are part of the study, were very exhaustive and particularized plans for each of these venues. They have plans, sections, elevations, and three-dimensional studies, uh, to determine that they in fact worked, and, uh, this, uh, more precise information could be used by the Arts Consulting Group to establish their viability and their cost. Uh, this is a view from, uh, Chicago Avenue of, uh, again, a very hypothetical design for a two, a pair of flexible use theaters. This location in particular, uh, would lend itself to being used by the Northwestern community as well. And these are by no means, uh, specific or proposed architectural designs, but rather, uh, represent, uh, the character that a building of the, of the sort that we had designed through the course of this study, uh, which are very abstract, uh, might convey, should it become a building. Uh, the second site was for a fixed form music and dance theater. Uh, this site is along Davis Street, adjacent to the, what is largely considered the heart of downtown, but also adjacent to Chicago Avenue. So it is at a, a juncture between, uh, a connection to the university as well as the heart of downtown. It has a prominent street presence, and, uh, this particular footprint supported the program that we had identified for a fixed form music and dance theater. It's also adjacent to the landmark University Building. Uh, it does not incorporate that building necessarily, but it could, uh, it could be joined in some way or be augmented by other, uh, compatible uses like a cafe or administration that could be housed in the University Building. And again, this view shows what is essentially a linear lobby adjacent to the house, uh, of the theater, which would have a very strong invisible presence on the street. This is something that we sought for all of the venues. Uh, again, though, I might add that all of the components of these venues in the more particularized design were seen as being developed in a very prototypical way. So should another site become available, should the program need to be augmented or diminished in some way, should it need to be reconfigured on another site, that these designs could easily be used as a guide for that process. Uh, the third site was for the, uh, Resident Use Theater, in this case, the North, uh, Resident Company Theater, uh, for Northlight. It has two flexible use theaters, and this, oh, this site is adjacent to, just to the west of the Metro Tracks on Davis Street and Maple Avenue. Uh, again, it's a corner site, so it would have strong visibility, uh, close proximity to the amenities of downtown, uh, but still providing an opportunity to invigorate the Davis Street Corridor to the west of the tracks. Uh, and this view is taken from the west, looking toward the tracks in downtown Evanston. Uh, again, it would have a strong invisible presence on the street and would be seen as an amenity that could, uh, uh, augment and possibly develop, uh, or encourage other development in the immediate vicinity. Each of these theaters was then evaluated for, uh, cost, viability, and possibilities for funding and financing, uh, through the Arts Consulting Group. Dennis Rupert will, uh, review the conclusions of those aspects of this study.
As both Todd and Eric noted, the, um, the study is, was, is based, was based on objective data collected from the, the various groups and their needs, and, uh, looked at through a prescribed area into downtown and tried to, uh, bring some reality to the situation by designing, uh, specific venues on specific sites and then providing costs for those. The CCS, uh, provided construction costs, estimates for each of those three venues. Uh, the Arts Consulting Group then took that information and compiled it as part of their study for the financial plan, which included, uh, performer operating, uh, budgets, verifying that, as this chart shows, the uses that each of those venues would have. They also made suggestions regarding, uh, how to move forward in relation to the Washington National Tiff District, noting which sites were within the Arts Corridor Zone, making suggestions about how that district could either be expanded or revised. They identified other possible funding sources for the next steps, um, which include creation of a public-private partnership to take this to the next level. And they put forward an action plan which, um, at least this list starts, starts and ends with the city of Evanston, but, um, it, it clearly states that the, the, the clear need for a public-private partnership to take the next steps towards realizing the, the goals of the study. And I think that the, um, the study is grounded in a, in a, a reality of where we are right this past year in terms of the uses of the groups and what we've seen downtown, but has a flexibility that we think will be useful for moving forward, uh, into the future. And I'd like to thank you, and we'd like to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for the very nice presentation. I'm just wondering, were any of the existing property owners in, uh, did you interview any of them to find out their interest in, um, cooperating with the project in any way?
Uh, we looked, we, we looked at the property, we looked at the downtown study area, um, sort of independent of talking specifically to specific property owners about, property owners about their, their individual interests. We looked at, uh, properties that were for rent, and we did tour some of those. We looked at sites that might be available, but we tried to look at it from the direction of what could be the, the, the best use in the development of the needs for the groups, what would fit downtown. Um, and Dennis can speak more directly to the others.
Excuse me, Dennis, if I could add a response. Uh, we did visit a number of different sites when property owners were present. We didn't visit all sites or talk with all property owners. We also worked through some brokers who introduced us to certain parcels and properties and rental opportunities that were available. Uh, that was all pro bono on the part of the broker without any expectations per se. Uh, so, uh, there was a substantial amount of that, but not in all cases.
And again, the, uh, the identification of prospective sites for these theater venues, performance venues was not based upon the availability of the property.
No, no.
It's really, as a, as a neutral observer, you were looking to see where the assets were, what made sense, if we were going to build the best
Exactly.
...kind of performing arts community in Evanston. Um, in preparing this report, what was the biggest expense for the consulting group?
Uh, well, the biggest, well, time, we spent a lot of time.
Right.
Um, we looked at over, um, you know, 24 sites that were on the list, which was pared down from probably even more than that. Um, the time spent in meeting and, and gathering information and then probably developing, uh, all of the schemes enough, far enough along to be, so they could be buildable, they were realistic, and then being able to put a cost to those schemes. So from the four different groups
Yeah.
...of the four different consultants within the group to, and then pull all that together into one, one vision of what the possibilities were.
In, in similar consulting that you've done with other municipalities, what roles have municipalities played in, in building a performing arts district? And I'm thinking of, you know, the, um, the one in East Cleveland, the Garfield, uh, Theater District
Yeah.
...and, um, others I'm familiar with. What would be logical next steps, but what has come before us in the way of what municipalities do?
Let, Todd.
Yeah.
There are as many approaches as there are municipalities. Uh, some of our clients, uh, include municipalities that will, uh, forward the artistic goals for, uh, a city, uh, to developers and work to have the requirement of, uh, the percent for art or the co-development of an art space, uh, as a means to make a broader development, i.e. the theater that's part of a broader development. Uh, we had some interesting exchanges with the, um, initiative in town now, the, the Evan Starts Group, that will be, I think, publishing its report soon. They had done some very exciting research about, uh, not only that type of initiative, but about, uh, communities that were gathering, uh, their resources, banding their resources for common, uh, cross, uh, cross pollination, cross marketing. So there, there are many ways to, to get at this.
Alderman Rainey.
Um, well, I'm not familiar with, um, establishments in other communities, but I'd, I'd like to know more about, um, the Skokie Performing Arts. That, did Skokie, uh, participate in the payment of that, the one on, uh, Skokie Boulevard, where Northlight is currently housed?
Uh, Alderman Rainey, I'm, I'm not intimate with the details, but I am aware that Skokie aided in the development of the North Shore Center for the Performing Arts.
But it's, it's not a municipally owned, uh, project?
I'm, I, I couldn't quote its details. I'd be remiss.
Do any of the other consultants that are here have that information?
Will and Brons from our consulting group may have.
We hired these consultants, and we have, we have a huge performing arts center right across the border, and we don't know anything about it.
Well, you know, we, we didn't study that type of space because it is not the type of, uh, theater venue that we heard the need for.
But there's one of our potential partners in there, Northlight. Why do they want to leave?
I'm not sure I want to put, uh, words in Northlight's mouth, but they, uh, desire a return to their, to their roots.
Because you can't get better parking. You can't, I mean, everything is right there at the performing art. I, I understand people want to be in Evanston, but I'm very curious as to how that's operated. Because while it might not be exactly the kind of thing you're looking at here, it does house a community-type theater, and at least it used to be. I, you know, somebody, somebody help me here.
Alderman Rainey.
Now, could we get our staff to help us get information about the Skokie Performing Arts?
Yes, we could.
Thank you.
And, and we have it right here, thanks to Alderman Wilson. Uh, the facility was conceived in the 1980s. It was constructed at a cost of $18 million. State of Illinois contributed $13.2 million, and the Village of Skokie $3.4 million. The remaining construction funds were donated by a foundation and other private donors. So my understanding is, though, that, um, that there is a, um, joint powers, it's the, called the Center East Metropolitan Exposition Auditorium and Office Building Authority, was created by the State of Illinois. As the owner of the new center, the Village of Skokie appoints six of nine members of the authority, and Niles Township appoints three. So, uh, I think it is a, it is a subsidiary of sorts of the Village of Skokie. And, uh, and I know, uh, that they do make an annual contribution, not to, uh, any theater, but to, to support the overall operations. And I think that has been a point of contention in the Village of Skokie over the last several years, is the, is the operating, uh, subsidy that's provided by the Village of Skokie. In my conversations with Northlight, separate and apart from anything that the consultants have had, uh, I, I think it is that flexibility, looking for different models of, uh, theater use that they're looking for. I think that, uh, they see the vibrancy of our downtown, the ability, uh, for restaurants and the location in Northwestern, and also transit. You've heard transit a number of times. I think this is another issue. I think a lot of, uh, patrons come. I think many of the, the actors and other participants are, are people that could access the theaters by the transit. So I think those are the reasons, uh, in my brief conversations with the leadership at Northlight, that they've expressed wanting to come back to Evanston.
Well, it's interesting that that is also where Dan Center Evanston does its research.
Well, and it's, and it's a space, and I think as this, Alderman Rainey, members of the council, as this, uh, study has indicated, that there is a, a, a great need for space. Um, and I think that there are, are, are various entities that do, uh, look to Skokie, that do look to the north side of Chicago, um, because that space exists, and they look to Evanston for that medium-sized spaces, as the report indicates, and that's just not available, um, as the need would, would, would indicate that, that they're certainly interested.
Alderman Wilson?
Um, I just...
Well, thank you for your help. And, uh, I had one question. I, I don't think the State of Illinois is going to give 13 million to anybody in the near future. So, um, you did a wonderful report. It was very clear until we got to how to pay for it, and then at least in my mind, it became murky. Um, we don't have a lot of money. And you're suggesting a lot of buildings that I, I believe would be filled, but how do we pay for them?
Right. Well, Dennis, I, I may ask Dennis to help me out with this, because we're representing for our, our absent colleague, Will and Brons of the Arts Consulting Group.
Yes. Well, I, I think, I mean, I think the, uh, the report, it identifies the needs, it identifies the, the probable costs, and it puts it in the context of downtown Evanston. Um, that doesn't, doesn't mean to say that all three of these venues would have to be built at once, let's say.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, secondly, I think what it does, it does point out s- certain things that, that recognize the particular characteristics of Evanston and its advantages or disadvantages, if you will, in moving forward. One of those that it points out is clearly, uh, it's, it's high on the list in terms of communities that, uh, su- support philanthropic enterprises. It, uh, it has, uh, adjacent to a, a thriving university that has an interest in the arts as well, and has expressed an interest in, uh, supporting the arts in downtown Evanston in, in the meetings that we've been, um, part of in terms of, uh, potential need of space as well. So I think the opportunities are there. In the past, it appears as though, uh, in Will and Brons's, uh, analysis, that, uh, creations of public-private partnerships that allow, uh, cities or municipalities to be involved, orchestrate, but not, um, take the, the financial burden, um, are, are potential, the potential for that i- is there, and it relies a lot on, um, the community having the desire to see something happen and, and bringing together the requisite, um, approach. But I, I think the report outlines the possibilities. The next step, um, would be to identify that, if you will, organization or model of how that, to make that step.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Um, I wasn't going to talk about this, but I, I now I'm curious. Would you just explain one more time the next step would be to?
The, the next step in the action plan, um, would be to, first of all, maintain momentum through the city of Evanston, continuity and supporting, um, a plan that, to move forward with providing space for performing arts groups in downtown Evanston. That, that's one of the chief recommendations, is the continuity. The, the only continuity that, that is here is the city, to help move things forward. It's not saying that the city has to put forward the funds to do that, but it has to be able to, it's, it's sort of like the catalyst for helping things move forward. So that's one key point of the analysis. Uh, the other is that there, um, is trying to involve other, determining, um, what role the city should take in its continuing, uh, role to, if it wants to see something happen in downtown Evanston. And part of that is through public-private partnerships. I think the Evanston Community Foundation, as, as Todd has mentioned as well, has moved forward with its ideas, uh, about the arts in Evanston. I think, um, the, you know, Northwestern University clearly is a, a major player in the arts in the area, and I think that, um, I think someone just, someone has to take the, uh, the initiative to, uh, move forward.
When you say the city, do you mean the, the downtown Evanston and arts people, the people who brought us, um, this project?
I, I think in this case, we're actually talking about the city of Evanston. The actual city of Evanston government being a continuous, having, having a continuing role in, in seeing how something can be developed. seeing how something can be developed. I think that is what has been proven in other instances, that that, if that interest sort of waxes and wanes, if there's not a kind of determination to keep involved in seeing how something moves forward, the clear sort of connection between all these different issues of, you know, development and land and utilization, the city is in the unique position of being able to act as a promoter.
One more question, and then I'll quit. Is the consultant's job over now?
It is as far as the study, but not as far as our interest.
No, but you know what I mean. I mean, the task.
The task has been completed, but we, you know, we are, we're, you know, we're at your service in terms of, you know, following up on anything that you, that we can do to help move it forward.
Alderman Grover. And I'd remind you, it's almost nine and we.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Have 551 pages to go through.
I think it's important that we not shelve this study, that we keep it in play, please, that we use the Evan Starts report that we're going to get, I hope, very soon, is to give it more momentum, to feel something real tangible for the arts in Evanston. I have a technical question about the study itself. Did the NEA grant itself prescribe the area of study? That is, did it prescribe limiting it to our downtown area? Was that part of just the defined scope of the study? Answer's yes. Great. Thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As far as next steps, this is, I think, the first of a series of reports and discussions that the council will be having over the next few months. We are already engaged in a discussion regarding theater on Howard Street, and that has begun and that will continue. Now with this report in hand, I think the next discussion that will happen at the Human Services Committee next week is an update on our discussions with the Pivon Theater Workshop. That's another component of this that's been going on for quite some time, and I think we'll have at least some additional information to share at that point. As you know, the Harley Clark Mansion, as far as the visual arts is concerned, and the future location of the Evanston Arts Center, I think that that will also be coming back to the full council for discussion probably in the next 45 to 60 days. The Evan Arts work that has been discussed at several occasions this evening is scheduled to come before you on March the 18th at your third Monday meeting. So my guess is that by March 18th, most of these pieces then will be known to you, and I think it would be appropriate for the council to convene in special session sometime in the early spring, mid-spring, to really lay all this out and then decide what makes sense for next steps. So I think that in the next 30, 45 days, you'll have most of those pieces known to you, and I think we'll be able to make a more complete discussion on our next steps.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate to make a motion that we.
Yes, please.
Report and thank everybody involved that produced it and participated?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is as follows. Could I make a comment about the consent agenda? Somebody asked me why we never discuss anything on the consent agenda. If I could just explain and define the consent agenda and its items for action or introduction tonight, that no member of the council, after reviewing, has decided they have an objection or wish to further discuss. So any item that is going to be discussed, or maybe have a negative vote, is taken off the consent agenda and discussed by the committee chair. Thank you.
Oh, and many of these issues were discussed in committee.
Oh, they all were. Yes, ma'am. They all were. First item on the consent agenda is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting January 14. The Administration of Public Works Committee met this evening and recommend your approval of the payroll through January 13, in the amount of $3,080,373.72. The Evanston bills for 2012 through January 29, $1,930,786.17. And the bills of 2013 through January 29, in the amount of $664,767.1. The committee asks your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2013 parking garage roof project at the Church Street and Maple Avenue garages with G.A. Johnson of Evanston, in the amount of $218,000. Funding is from the Parking Fund. We recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with E-Town Tennis for the city of Evanston's tennis program. Contract period is for three years, based on a mutual option to renew for two additional years, from January 31 through December 31, 2015. The city's 2013 tennis budget reflects estimated revenues of $102,100 and total expenses of $98,859. We ask your approval that the council, for approval to purchase fuel for the 12 months of FY 2013, in the amount of $950,000 from Palatine Oil, winner of the Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Bid Process. Funding is from Fleet Service Major Maintenance. We ask your approval also of the 2013 refuse disposal fees to the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, otherwise known as SWANC, not to exceed the amount of $83,300 for capital costs, $1 million for operations and maintenance, and $40,000 in recycling transfer fees. We ask your approval for the purchase of seven Union Metal Talmage streetlight poles and supplies from Graybar Electric, in the amount of $40,600, $963.06 for the Amlee Development Streetscape, 631 749 Chicago Avenue pursuant to the 2008 planned development. Funding is provided by Community and Economic Development Account. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute an agreement with Parsons Brinkerhoff to conduct the Main Street Transit Oriented Development Study and Plan. Funding of the $125,000 cost of the study is provided by $100,000 commitment from the Regional Transportation Authority and $25,000 from the city's Economic Development Fund. The council is requested to authorize the city manager to execute a change order number two to the agreement with C.T.L. Group for the inspection of the 1934 reservoir and 1948 settling basins at the Evanston Water Treatment Facility. And this would increase the agreement amount by $20,000 and extend the completion date to December 31, 2013. Committee asks your approval of Resolution 2R13, which authorizes the manager to submit a congestion mitigation and air quality program application for the Dodge Avenue Protected Bike Lanes from Howard Street to Church Street. Preliminary costs for the project's construction is estimated to be $600,000. The CMAC Fund will approve, the wording should be changed here, the CMAC Fund approves up to, approves 80% of the project's construction cost, or $480,000. The remaining 20% of $120,000 is the local share, which will be budgeted in the 2014 Capital Improvement Program. The committee asks your approval for the manager to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Evanston Township High School 202, for the staffing of a police officer at the high school as a resource officer, and for E.T.H.S. to employ a career job coordinator to work on vocational training activities. Next, we ask your approval for the adoption of Resolution 3R13, which authorizes the manager to enter into lease renewal agreements for resident artists' leases for terms less than two years for space at the Noise Cultural Art Center. The following are ordinances, and they are for leases that exceed two years. First, we request to authorize the manager to enter into a five-year renewal lease agreement with Next Theater. These are all for introduction, by the way. Next, Ordinance 14013 authorizes the manager to enter into a 10-year renewal lease with the Evanston Children's Choir. For introduction, also authorizing the manager to enter into a three-year lease agreement with Arts Encounter. The city manager also is requesting to enter into a lease for 10, lease agreement for 10 years with Actors Equity. Next, we have for introduction, the sale of surplus property. We recommend you authorize the manager to publicly offer for sale three vehicles owned by the city through public auction. Next, Class P liquor license. This is for introduction. Staff and committee recommend city council adoption of 17013, which amends Class P license by increasing the maximum quantity of alcohol permitted for onsite production and storage from 15,000 gallons to 30,000 gallons for one year, with another increase to 35,000 gallons annually thereafter. This really just complies with the state change in the number of gallons allowed. The next item, which is limiting panhandling, is going to be held and discussed by the committee chair.
The next one is held.
I mean, it's going to be off the agenda. It's not being held. It's off the agenda. The next four.
Are held.
The next four items are off the committee, off the consent agenda and will be discussed by the committee chair. They have to do the Tiff District at the main in Chicago. Next, we have the Planning and Development Committee. First item is, the committee requests your approval of a loan to the Housing Opportunity Development Corporation for construction at 319 Dempster. It would be a forgivable loan in the amount of $20,188 to build a restroom in the common area of the Claret Department Building, 319 Dempster. This would be for staff and social service providers. That's for action. Also for action is a recommendation to approve the proposed substantial amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program to the NSP-2 project. The amendment would add land banking and demolition as an end-use to meet program object to the eligible, whoops, the eligible activities of the city's NSP-2 project. Next is for introduction. The committee recommends the adoption of Ordinance 11013, which grants a special use permit for the operation of a Type II restaurant, Starbucks, at 1734 Sherman Avenue. Next is Ordinance 5013, which amends.
Alderman Rainey, would you remove that, please?
Okay. The Carroll Property Project at Oak and Mabel is off the consent agenda. Madam Mayor has no nominations for boards or commissions this evening, and therefore I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, could you take us through Administration of Public Works?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move introduction of Ordinance 18013. This is item A14, which amends Section 9525 Panhandling of the Evanston City Code. At committee, we decided we'd like to introduce it. Send it back to committee for further consideration.
Second.
Do we need to vote on sending it back?
No, we need to vote on.
I think so. Oh, on introduction, okay. So you've moved to introduce it?
We did.
Perfect. And it's been seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move A15 for Action Resolution 6R13, adopting a redevelopment implementation plan for the Chicago Main Tiff District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. City Manager, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I would just want to briefly go through some changes that were made to the document that is attached to the resolution. As I think the council is aware, A16, 17, and 18 have been previously introduced as ordinances. What we have done is added this resolution to the package for the adoption of a redevelopment implementation plan. The council, when it adopted the Dempster Dodge Tiff several months ago, indicated its desire to have a roadmap as to how the Tiff funds would be spent, and we crafted a resolution at that time. Since then, we have developed a more thorough plan, which is included in your packet, and a previous draft has been included previously. And I just would like to go through, if I may, a few slides and Ms. Knight, and if you could help with the clicker, maybe you could just hand me the clicker, because I would like to give sort of the shorter version of, I think, what we previously had planned to talk about this evening. I think you're all familiar, as many of the speakers have said, this is something we have been discussing for quite some time. You're familiar with the map of the area. We've talked about the ordinances in the resolution. I think you're familiar with the key elements of the plan. $25 million proposed budget, the finding under Illinois redevelopment law is a but-for finding that will, is the finding that we're making to move forward through the ordinances that are attached. This is a breakdown of the budget for the Tiff during the Tiff's life. Again, this is information that you have seen previously. But in the plan, I want to go through some very key points of this. The first is a mayor-appointed advisory committee, and we met with the business owners at the Main Street area. They were very concerned about how the money for the Tiff would be spent. So we are asking, through this plan and with the adoption of the ordinance, the mayor would be requested to create an advisory committee that would advise the city council on the spending of the Tiff dollars. This would be the first one of such committees for the city of Evanston and the many Tiffs that has passed over the years, and certainly is uncommon in Illinois. And we think this is a positive change and one that came directly from our discussions with the Main Street Merchants Association. We are also proposing, since you last saw a draft of this document, a phased approach to the utilization of the Tiff funds. And I appreciate the assistance that Alderman Don Wilson has provided to staff over the last couple of weeks to help us, I think, tease through some of the important key details of this. I think there was a feeling among some members of the council, a feeling among some members of the community, that there needs to be an understanding of how the money would be spent, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. A third key point that I would thank Alderman Wilson for helping us add to the plan is that private development in Main Chicago must be mixed-use office retail to qualify for Tiff's funds, and the spending on infrastructure would only move forward if there's a redevelopment agreement. Again, there's been concern on the council. A Tiff passes, you bond for $25 million, then where does the money come from? And so a key component to this plan would be that that bonding would only move forward once there is a redevelopment agreement in place for a private development at Main and Chicago. Again, we'll talk about the infrastructures improvements as we move forward. You have seen various renderings of the building at Main and Chicago. You're familiar, I think, with the general parameters of the building. We're very excited, as has been mentioned previously, the city and the State of Illinois has endorsed its confidence in this project by a million-dollar grant for high-speed internet. We've also heard this evening of the grant from the Regional Transportation Authority. But I want to stress that the approval tonight of a Tiff is not the approval of funding for private development in Main Chicago. Funding only comes through a redevelopment agreement and a planned development ordinance. And if this is approved tonight by the city council, we would move forward with that redevelopment agreement negotiated with the developer. Included in the plan is the recommendation that an ad hoc committee of the Third and Fourth Ward Alderman be appointed to work with staff to have this agreement. As I think many of you know, Alderman Wilson does real estate for a living, and I think has talked to staff on more than one occasion about his concerns about seeing well-intentioned entities enter into agreements to build buildings, and now he spends some time trying to sort through those agreements when some of those well-intended parties are in a different place over the last five or six years. And so we want. The only way that funding is provided is through a redevelopment agreement. And again, this plan has very specific language in it that would direct how that development agreement would be negotiated and then brought back to council. We've talked about the transit-oriented development. I apologize if I sound like a broken record, but the value of this property being located next to a Metra and a CTA station is a very unique opportunity for us. This is one of the most valuable areas of Evanston because of that transit link. You have at your places this evening a letter from the Chicago Transit Authority endorsing their future participation as partners in the Tiff. We have also talked with Union Pacific and Metra, and they are also anxious to be a partner here. All the good plans in the world with transit moving forward won't happen unless there's funding. And part of this Tiff, if the private development on the corner of Main and Chicago moves forward, would provide funding to assist with the transit improvements in the area. Storefront modernization, but again, another real key component, and again, thanks to Alderman Wilson for helping us crystallize this, is a commitment in Phase One, in the first few years of the Tiff, if the development agreement is completed at the Main Chicago site, of an infrastructure project that would include streets, sidewalks, and underground infrastructure from Sherman Avenue to just prior to Hinman Avenue. We've got that up there. You can see the various geographic points there. That's very critical. And the little bit of detail here, $3,780,000 that would go in to invest in that area business district. Part of why we're doing this is not only to create good jobs in that office building, but to make sure that those businesses who have been there a very long time continue to stay there and continue to flourish and have the Tiff invest in those business areas. Phase Two of the infrastructure costs, $4.9 million, would come at the tail end of all of this. So here is approximate next steps. If the council approves the Tiff this evening to move forward with the appointment of an advisory committee, move forward with the infrastructure improvements, move forward with the negotiation of a redevelopment plan for Main and Chicago. I've been fortunate to be your city manager now a little over three and a half years. This council has been through difficult budgets. It has laid people off. It has reorganized in order to meet the changing priorities of this community. This Tiff is an investment in the changing priorities of this community. It's an investment in making sure there's a location for jobs. It's an investment that leverages what is really priceless, transportation infrastructure from the CTA and Metra. It's an investment for the business owners that have been on Main Street for years, as you've heard from their president earlier this evening, have looked to the city for assistance. All of those things come together, leveraged with the private investment that the family has done, leveraged by the grant from the governor for the gigabit, leveraged by the support from the RTA for the transit development planning. All the things that are coming together, all the things that represent the future of Evanston are included in this Tiff. And I'm a big Evanston booster, and the glass is always half-full with me on all things Evanston, but with this Tiff, the glass is completely full. This is a future for Evanston, and staff is here to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
Mr. Bobkowitz, I wish that you were as much of a cheerleader for other projects, particularly in my ward. So it's great that you're such a cheerleader for this, and I respect your opinion on it. However, I'm completely in opposition and will continue to be in opposition of this Main and Chicago Tiff. The case hasn't been made for this Tiff. It has never been made for this Tiff. It's not a blighted area. If you walk up and down Main Street from Sherman to Hinman, how many vacant storefronts do you find? Maybe two? This isn't a blighted area. Is there infrastructure issues? There's infrastructure issues throughout this community. Are there more infrastructure issues here? There are not. So again, I understand you want the office building, and we're going to say that it's not about the office building, but it's about the office building. The case also has not been made that we need an office building there. We've heard from, I believe it was Kellogg students, saying, maybe we need office space, but probably not. There was no strong evidence. And if we really needed office space there and people were clamoring to be there, then the developer would have already built a building, and people would be in there. We're being asked to take the entire risk. I was today at a symposium on public-private partnerships. It was mostly focused on infrastructure and transportation. And the main thing that they talked about was risk, that everybody has to take risk on this. We're the only ones. Not us, well, us, and the taxpayers are taking the risk. The developer's not taking the risk. CTA's not taking the risk. Metra's not taking the risk, but our taxpayers are taking the risk. And so that's my frustration with this. And then the plan that was put forward that then was retracted had items in there that in some ways were insulting. $19 million for an elevated bike path? Do we not have more issues in Evanston that we could use that $19 million for? Youth programs, maybe. Other infrastructure, but an elevated bike path? I think bike paths are great, but that's not a way to use it. There's also in that $100,000 to redevelop a park that isn't as big as this room? That's a waste of taxpayer dollars. So obviously, I'll be voting against this, and I just, again, don't understand our fiscal responsibility to all of the taxing bodies that are part of this area. So voting no.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to this issue? Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be brief, because I believe Mr. Bobkowitz has stated everything that I wanted to say and very eloquently. I would like to thank the staff and thank Mr. Bobkowitz for all of the hard work on this. This, to me, is one of the transformational moments for Evanston. All of our other Tiffs have created transformations, the ones that are well on their way. When I first joined this council, it was at a moment when the city was realizing the research park was not going to work. And we turned and decided to look at other options, and we started looking at movie theaters. And they were unthinkable for many people in Evanston. Evanston was a place where you might have four movie theaters downtown, certainly never more than eight, certainly never 18. But the city analyzed that and recognized the need to bring people into our downtown. And we see the renaissance of our downtown as a result of that. Here, we are looking at a corner like almost no other corners in all of the Chicago area. Main and Chicago has an empty corner and two transportation lines on it. We're within easy-striking distance of Chicago, and we're on a car corridor that carries 20,000 cars a day in north-south and 10,000 cars a day east-west. Not that I'm advocating that people continue to use it, but they're there. This is our opportunity to create jobs and put them right at that corner. I've said a number of times before that we were lucky to have that condo building fail, actually, because we would have a nine-story-tall condo building, just like we have on the other three corners at that corner, and we would have missed the transportation-oriented development opportunity for office space. This is our opportunity to do that, to really revive that area. It may look as though it is economically healthy. It's not blighted, but it is deteriorating. And when we do the Tiff analysis, blight is not the only requirement. Blight is only one of a number. This meets the Tiff test. We have serious infrastructure problems there. We can see the transformation that happened when we finally got the CTA to rebuild that viaduct, and now we have an even uglier viaduct that needs work. That's part of what this is all about. And this is our opportunity to put 300 to 400 people there on that corner in the daytime, adding to the transportation, enhancing the community in all directions, and bringing real life to those businesses that are all wonderful and marvelous and have held on through very tough times. So I urge all of you to support this. This is going to be an enormous success. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Alderman Burris?
If my memory serves me, I believe we did have an opportunity to develop that site, and we rejected it. Or we said to the person that we didn't really want what they had to offer there. Am I correct on that? Or am I mistaken, that somebody wanted to develop that site? And maybe my memory is failing me, but I believe that there was an offer to develop that site. And if all the statistics are true about the traffic and the transit-oriented development, then an office building would be there. Then a developer would say, yes, I want to have an office building there because it's important to have it there. But no developer is saying that no one who wants to put up an office building is willing to put their money in it. They're only asking us to put our money in it.
City manager?
Alderman Burris, I will respond to the first point. We did have three different potential purchasers for the site who wanted to put in a drugstore of some kind, but they all required a drive-through. And that our traffic department said was not feasible and unsafe at that corner. So we've had three proposals for drugstores, but all three came with the drive-through concept. And we simply said, that's not safe at that corner.
Thank you.
And those were the only potential developments that we have had from anyone since the building went into bankruptcy.
Thank you. City manager, did you wish to say anything?
Just to help answer the question, Mr. O'Donnell, who's here, is the owner of the property, and he is proposing an office building. And if this Tiff is successful, negotiate a development agreement that will clearly state what is the city's responsibilities and what is the developer's responsibilities. And at that time, the council will get to weigh and decide if that happens. So the question is, is there someone who wants to build an office building? The answer is yes, the property owner.
Alderman Burris?
I guess I'm confused in why a drive-through wouldn't be safe, but a five-story office building with parking and people going in and out is safe. That just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If our transportation people are saying a drive-through is a problem, but that many people coming in and out is not a problem, again, it just doesn't seem to be right.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Seeing no lights for further discussion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Chicago Main Redevelopment Project area. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The motion passes. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 13012, having been introduced at our meeting on December 10th, I move adoption of ordinance 13012, approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the Chicago Main Redevelopment Project area.
It's been moved and seconded to approve designating the Chicago Main Redevelopment Project area of the city of Evanston, a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Alderman Burris?
Again, this is financially irresponsible.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Madam Mayor, I moved item A16, which is the Tiff plan. I think you just referred to A17.
Sorry, okay.
Thank you.
All right. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Ordinance 13112, having been introduced at our meeting on December 10th, 2020, I move adoption of that ordinance, designating the Chicago Main Redevelopment Project area of the city of Evanston as a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to that? No. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The motion passes. Alderman Grover, that concludes your report. Alderman Fisk, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P5 is off the agenda as ordinance 5013, amending planned developments for 1881 Oak and 1890 Maple. Staff requests consideration of the revised ordinance 5013, amending planned developments for 1881 Oak and 1890 Maple. This ordinance was introduced during the city council meeting of January 4th, 2013. It is for action. I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 5013. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, again, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be voting against this and wanted to share with you my reasons why. I would much prefer that this building include a rental component that was based on the original plan that would be converted to condominiums later in the real estate cycle when things got a little bit more encouraging out there. But that would provide some stability to the other condo buildings in the downtown. And given the number of the rental-
And I've supported them, with one exception, which is the Howard Hartree TIF. I did not support that, which is one of the biggest mistakes of my political career. However, however, I'm going to say that whatever is good for Maine and Chicago is just as good for Howard Street. I know these TIFs are all different, but for you to refer to this as being transformational and to vote against a project in the TIF on Howard Street, to me, is just so hypocritical. And I hope you will reconsider your opposition to the project on Howard Street. Because I am supporting this all the way, because I am a loyal member of this council and I trust your opinion and the comments by the city manager. But I also feel that there is, I've never given any member of this council a reason not to trust my efforts. And I'm going to ask you to reconsider your vote against my theater.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Comes, when it comes back before you.
Been moved and seconded to adopt tax increment allocation financing for the Chicago Maine redevelopment project area. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman Grover, that concludes your report. Alderman Fisk, could we have planning and development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P5 is off the agenda as ordinance 5013, amending planned developments for 1881 Oak and 1890 Maple. Staff requests consideration of the revised ordinance 5013, amending planned developments for 1881 Oak and 1890 Maple. This ordinance was introduced during the city council meeting of January 4th, 2013. It is for action, I move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 5013. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, again, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm going to be voting against this and wanted to share with you my reasons why. I would much prefer that this building include a rental component that was based on the original plan, that would be converted to condominiums later in the real estate cycle, when things got a little bit more encouraging out there. But it, it, that would provide some stability to the other condo buildings in the downtown. And given the number of the rental apartments at or nearing completion in Evanston, I'm concerned that we're on the cusp of overbuilding. And without knowing the impact on other, either the condos or the rental buildings in the downtown. And other concerns include widening Emerson to four lanes. I don't think that's particularly beneficial to hopefully the families that will be living in the townhouses, who need to drop off and pick up children in front on the street, or for bicycle riders from Northwestern between Ridge and, and campus. I'm concerned about the reduction of rental spa, retail space, and also the considerable reduction in the number of parking spaces and the size of the units themselves. And the static rental demographic, then, unlike the condominium performance that we've seen in the downtown, I don't believe really is going to provide that many new consumers into the downtown. Finally, I'm concerned about the lack of discussions with Northwestern University about the university's plans for construction of student housing on campus and what that's going to mean for, again, the long-range planning that we must do as a, as a community. So for those reasons, I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I'd like to have a little more discussion on the increasing the lanes. I wasn't really in touch with that issue until the gentleman came from the environment board to discuss that. Also, I need to know from the developer, what, what is the, what is the projection of costs for, for improving the streetscape? The, you know, the sidewalks and the lighting and all that? Not including the $150,000 requirement for a traffic signal? So I'll hold, and I'll let you know when everything gets answered.
Robinson, did you want to start?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. With regards to the lane widening, because there will be anticipated 1,500 additional cars that will be added as a result, or trips that will be added, we are recommending that the, the lanes be expanded from two to four, two in each direction. That will result in the removal of parking on one side of the street, and that will be the south side of Emerson.
But is there concurrence with that? I mean, is it just that we think that should be done? I mean, I, I thought the argument about bike lanes was an interesting one.
Well, the, actually, the widening of the, from two to four doesn't really have that much of an impact on the, the bike lanes. There are no bike lanes on that segment of Emerson. It's actually a bike route. The bike lanes on Emerson actually stop at Asbury, and bikers continue to bike along with traffic. And that, they are allowed to bike for two lanes until they cross Ridge, and then they actually merge into one lane with the cars. So this will actually preserve that two lanes of, of traffic all the way through.
Who, who is paying for the expansion of the lanes?
The lane expansion is really just restriping. That's all a part of the improvement project that we're recommending.
There's no construction involved in that?
No, not, not for the, to restripe the road.
And what are you, I don't know who can answer this, the developer, or Steve, or you, about the, I asked earlier, when we were talking about the Amley project, what the contribution on the part, or what the cost to the developer was for the streetscape work that he did? Do we know what the streetscape?
Yes, the, the streetscape project for, for this segment is going to be a little more expensive than the $450,000 because of the width. So we're estimating that that's going to be anywhere between $800,000 to $1 million.
And that is the obligation of the developer?
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, having heard that, that is why, Madam Mayor, I am, and members of the council, I am very interested in having a discussion about the additional $150,000 for the traffic signal. My, my interest in that is this. The requirement to make the payment is when the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued. When, when do we expect that to be? 2015?
Correct.
Yeah. And the, at that time, when we're requesting that payment be made of the $150,000 after the developer has done the streetscape upwards of $800,000 to $1 million, which is really real money. I mean, that's, even though this project is in excess of a $100 million project, which we should all be very, very thankful for, I mean, we're talking about a vacant lot at Chicago and Maine doing a tax increment financing district to really assist in its development. This, this is not requiring that. The TIF has expired, all these taxes are going to the taxing bodies, praise God. And so, we're talking about an additional $800,000 to $1 million on a $100 million-plus project. So I'm wondering, why could we not say, look, we got to have a traffic signal there? But at this point in time, three years away, we don't really know all of the details of that. So I would like to suggest that we amend this requirement, that it flat-out be paid at the day the certificate of occup, temporary occupancy be issued, and say, at that time, or prior to that even, that we will meet with the developer and negotiate a payment for the, the addition or replacement of a traffic signal. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that it's not going to cost $150,000. I'm just saying, let's not say, in the very words that are there now, that he has to pay $150,000 the day the temporary occupancy certificate is issued. I am saying that we, we begin to negotiate prior to that time for the price of that. Because who knows? By that time, we could get a C-MAC grant.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Steve Griffin, Department of Community and Economic Development. As Ms. Robinson talked about, there's going to, this project is going to generate over 1,500 vehicles. That's only going to be a piece of the need that's out there in restriping, the traffic signalization we talked about, that right now, we're estimating that we're going to need to put in a capital improvement project for you in the next two years for upwards to $2 million. This $150,000 is only a portion of that. Once the council gives approval, the discretionary approval tonight, there's no way we, we can get the developer on the hook to contribute one penny more later. So it's, it's our suggestion that we stay with the agreement that was put in place back in 2006, that this 150 would go a long ways towards that capital project, which is street, or signal coordination, modernization, and then the striping and the paving of Emerson and Maple. All that would be city nickels that go into that. This 150 would be their proportional share of fixing that whole intersection.
I'm, I'm not saying he shouldn't participate, and I think with the 800 to a million, there is participation, not to mention the extraordinary permit fees, et cetera, that everybody pays, I realize. But how does that compare to somebody like Amley? What, what other expenses, other than the streetscape, are they, are they committed to?
Suzette looked, and there's been like four projects, if you want to go through those.
Yeah, sure. So going back to the development that happened at 2424 Oakton, which is the Shell gas station, as a result of that, they paid for the streetscaping and they also paid for the traffic signal at that location. The city actually, through CIP, paid for the repaving of, of Oakton in that area. Rhodes Act development at Clark and Oak, they paid, well, pledged to pay $180,000 for a street resurfacing, and they also completed the streetscape, the, they had limited streetscape, but they were required to, to do that as well. And then we have the example of Evanston Hospital that redid their garage, and they paid for the design of the, the signal modernization in that area, and then paid $200,000 to install a traffic signal at Ridge and Gerard. So those are some examples of what other developers have paid. And as, as far as Amley, we talked about that earlier, they paid for the streetscape in that area to the tune of $450,000. We paid for the street lighting, but they're also going to pay an additional $150,000 for the installation of those streetlights.
So Madam Mayor, members of the council, the whole time we've been reviewing this project, this 150 never got brought up. We had always thought it was a proportionate share towards...
But it was just a thing I had, I'm sorry.
Okay. And all, all we're suggesting is, we think that this is the proportional share that they have with the creation of 1,500 vehicles per day that will go into that, that intersection in that, that area, that we think should be their proportion towards the fix that the, you know, the city council's going to have to wrestle with this in a couple of years of it being a capital improvement project. And, and so we're just trying to get, get it put in place.
Well, hopefully, when this project, which is huge, gets on the tax rolls, we'll all be in a better place.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Wilson?
I'm interested in perhaps trying it out without the four lanes, I guess, to see how that goes.
Yeah, I agree too.
I understand it's going to improve the traffic flow, but I ride my bicycle on that stretch. And I hadn't really given it conscious thought, but it's been brought up a couple of times over the past, past couple of weeks. So it might be appropriate to make it four lanes, but I, I think I'm at least interested in seeing how it works out with the two.
Yeah.
And just see how that goes. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, we can make that adjustment.
And you're considered approval of the planned development, doesn't forego that. That's going to be the city part of it. And again, some, some of that 150 is going to go, whether it's restriping it for a, a bike lane, whether it's the, just the traffic signalization, it could be some pedestrian activated light improvements.
And I, and I'd like to keep the 150,000 in there. I don't, don't like to give up money, so.
But I did want to tell you that the, your approval of the planned development doesn't, doesn't mandate that it has to go to four lanes.
Right. And I understood that.
Something we can do through the review process.
Right. I just think we, we've, we've talked about it, and I just wanted to express my desire to, to give it a shot and see how it goes without the four lanes.
Can I speak to that?
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I, I don't care whether it's four lanes, two lanes, six lanes, but I, to park it on the south side of the street, and I'm speaking for the residents in that area, I'm up there all the time. It's very difficult to come out of Oak, okay, headed north, because it, it's blinded all along there with this parking on the south side. So I don't know if eliminating the parking is what creates the extra lane. I'm not sure about it, but I'm just simply saying that is, really has to be a part of this, in order to take care of some of that traffic. And I, I, some of you were not at the, at the hearing that Alderman Braithwaite had a special meeting, and, and the residents talked about how horrible it is now. So we think about that they're going to have additional cars, so we certainly know that it's going to be really terrible to come out of, you have the university, you either come out of Oak or you go around and come out of East Railroad, which is just as bad, because there's no traffic light there. The traffic light is at Ridge, or you have to go around and come back down Maple and then come up. So I don't know what it does to planning, Director Robinson, but I definitely want to see that we keep that traffic, I mean, the parking off of the south side of the, of the street between, I guess it would be Ridge and Maple, for sure.
Well, if you don't add lanes, then you're going to have parking, because there's no...
Well, but I, we got to have that, that parking has got to go away, so that you can see. I mean, it's, you have to experience it to see, I'm sure the staff can tell you.
So you don't want parking?
I don't want parking on the south side, right.
I mean, that's not the deal.
Well, yeah, but if we're talking, it, it creates another space there, so.
Well, what I was going to suggest, as Director Griffin indicated, the, the plan, the traffic plan doesn't have to be decided as a part of the approval. And if you give us an opportunity to, to come back to you and, and update our traffic numbers and, and make the case for the, the four lanes, in addition to the line of sight issues for cars turning out onto Oak, which Alderman Holmes alluded to, that's a major problem, but also we have a major backup at rush hour currently. So, and that's with two lanes. And it's because we have four lanes of traffic on either side, from Ridge, on the, just east of Ridge, and then as well, west of Maple. So we are actually constricting traffic for that, basically, one block, or, in, in the middle. And, and it, it's causing traffic to bog down in that area. So we're trying to allow it to, to flow freely, given that there are going to be 1,500 additional trips generated in that same area, at an estimate. So if you would just maybe hold that issue, and we will come back to you with some more data and some more traffic counts, so, to make the case for that.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Alderman Wilson, I think I'm concerned about jeopardizing our ability to add some bike infrastructure on that stretch of Emerson. But my other question is, where do we find the obligation to the $150,000 payment? Is that in the planned development agreement in the ordinance somewhere? Is that the amendment?
Yeah, yes, it is. It's, the way we did it is one of the first ones that was back, back, done back in 2006. So it's in that language there.
It's the original.
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to talk about wet labs. Having been, in order to spur economic development to Northwestern, spoken with the Dean of Kellogg, the Dean of the Entrepreneur Program, who sent me to the Code Academy at the Merchandise Mart, everybody said the same thing, that if we want to keep Northwestern's tech development businesses and keep them in town, that we needed a wet lab, and we needed wet labs close to Northwestern University. And I have debated with Mr. King, who says this is not a wet lab, but his own advertisements say it is wet lab-ready. So at least, I guess we would agree. You're not, you're shaking your head.
What advertising on these levels?
It was in the CoStar listing for the building, so.
I have no idea about the CoStar listing, and there are certain...
Can you come to the mic? I didn't say there were. I said it's wet lab-ready, which we took from the CoStar listing, which, at any rate, the, the university's advice was that wet labs are very important, and that a wet lab building close to the university is the best possible way to keep Northwestern's tech businesses in town. And this is close to the university, and it is in the, listed as a wet lab-ready building. And it was, I believe, used as one at one point.
It was.
It was used as a wet lab office space at one point. So I just want to be clear, so that everybody knows that that is the advice that we were given by everybody. Alderman Rainey?
Yeah. Here's my advice. When Northwestern starts paying property taxes on its downtown office buildings, then it can start telling us what to do with our buildings. But until then...
I asked them.
Until then, I know, but, you know, they don't, they don't pay. So until, if they want to come downtown and take some more property off the tax rolls and build some wet labs, let them. They didn't, they blew it the last time, you know, let's let it rest. If they want wet labs, believe me, anybody with billions and billions and billions of dollars can build their own wet lab. So if, if they're threatening, maybe they're threatening to leave if we don't give them this wet lab, I don't know, but I think it's a ridiculous presentation that they're making.
I don't think they made it. I asked them what it would take to keep businesses that they incubated on campus in Evanston, and that was their advice.
Tell them this is a $100 million-plus project that helps pay for what they're not paying.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be brief, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to quickly say a couple of things. First, to Director Griffin, I wasn't sure what the comment you made a moment ago regarding to keeping the developer on the hook meant. But I, I just want to clarify that first, and then I'll make my comments.
Sorry, my country language comes out sometimes, and I apologize for that. It was just basically what the question was, is, it was in the original ordinance for the 150, and that's, that's what we were talking about, maintaining. I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Maybe to the developer, not to me, but thank you, sir, for making. So I'm, I'm speaking because I'm in support of this. To put a dollar amount to, to the value that it brings to the city, it'll be $1 million in new property taxes. It, it will generate new retail tax to the downtown local market, and I also see it as an opportunity to create local jobs. To Alderman Rainey's point, I think we've had several years to convert that space into a wet lab, and the, and the point that she made is that the market just didn't support that. And so if the market supported a wet lab, I think we would have a wet, a wet lab. It seems a bit unfair to me that we're trying to tell a developer who isn't asking for any public dollars how to develop his property. So I've met with the neighbors, I've heard the concerns, I've also heard from those that are in support. I promised the residents of the second ward to continue to monitor this, this project, very similar to the, the project that focused development. And to date, I have yet to receive any complaints from any residents regarding the building of that project. So again, I'll continue to work with the neighbors, continue to work with the city staff and developers, just to make sure that this is another project that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, I think we're ready to vote on Ordinance 5013, amending the planned developments for 1881 Oak and 1890 Maple. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wynn.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The motion passes. That brings us to call of the wards. Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one announcement to make. This coming Thursday, January 31st, will be the groundbreaking ceremony for Trader Joe's, and everyone here on the council is welcome to lift a shovel, 1:00 p.m., Thursday, January 31st. We'll make sure that everyone has their own individual shovel and hard hat. The members of the public are, are welcome to come too. Of course, they won't have any of their peanut butter-filled pretzels yet, but I, I, it's a great, a great time. The, the old building has been demolished, it has been a very, very neat demolition going on, and we're really excited. So come on out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. As some of the local press and many people are already aware, a much-loved member of our community passed away over the weekend, Vito Brullier, who is a constituent of mine, a favorite constituent, a voice who shared many ideas, thoughts, and concerns over the years that I've been the, I've been the Alderman, and it's with great sadness that I, that I received that news, and my condolences to his family.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that there is a ward meeting coming up between, with combined ward meetings, sixth and seventh wards, that'll take place on February 7th at 7:00 p.m., Three Crown Center, which is 2323 McDaniel, and there's a fairly large agenda being put together, so it'll be a good, very, very good informative evening for residents in the sixth and seventh ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up on Alderman Wilson's comments about Vito. Great guy, brilliant mind, really irritating, but I loved him dearly. I just loved him dearly. Just so, if anybody wants to make a note, his, the wake is going to be at Don Ellen on Skokie Boulevard on Friday, the 8th, from 3:00 to 9:00, and at S.H.I.E.L.D. Catholic Center, the funeral on the 9th, Saturday, at 11:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
And thank you also for passing another project for the city of Evanston. I mean, tonight was a big night, a TIF and a million-dollar, a $100 million-plus project.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add my voice to those in remembrance of Vito. Now, I hope I don't start to cry, I'm just terrible about this. Vito was an amazing guy. He was, graduated from Northwestern in 1955, and he was an engineer, and he had an engineer's mind, and he brought that mind to every single community topic that was of interest to him in Evanston. I met him when we were talking about the Northeast Evanston Historic District, and we were up against a, a lot of opposition, and, and Vito gave me his support, and he was wonderful, and I was surprised, because he was a Northwestern alum. And he came out and he said, that's absolutely the right thing, and protecting that neighborhood is a really good thing, and celebrating that neighborhood is a really good thing, and he never let me down. And I hope I never let him down either. I think what was so remarkable about him was that he would get his tail wagging and get into issues, and he demanded the best. He, he brought to those issues an incredible love for Evanston, an incredible love for family, and an incredible commitment to Evanston. As one of the founders of the Dewey Community Conference, he and his wife, Mary, were at the forefront of, of really sticking up and fighting for Dewey School, which was a model for schools in the 1960s. And all throughout his life in Evanston, he just gave so unsulphishly to everyone. And if Alderman Rainey and I both love him and agree that he's the greatest guy in the world, you know that he reached out to everyone. So goodbye to Vito, and we'll miss you terribly.
Thank you. Alderman Brathwaite.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to quickly say thank you again to our city staff. You made some comments earlier regarding the new restaurant that opened in the second ward, and I really need to thank the city manager, particularly Steve Griffin and the Economic Development Team, Suzette Robinson in the Public Works Department, Greg Kleiber at the Fire Department, as well as Yvonda Thomas with the Health Department. This Wednesday, the neighbors in the South Canal Park and the King Lagg Neighbors have been notified that we plan to host a meeting Wednesday at 7:00 o'clock at 2424 Dempster, just to talk about parking strategy, as well as the operate, excuse me, the hours of operation for the restaurant. And I also want to remind members of the second ward that this next month, February, the third Thursday of the month, February 21st, the third, yeah, the second Thursday is Valentine's Day. So we've moved the ward meeting, and residents will be notified. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
Pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiles Statutes ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss the agenda item regarding security. This agenda item is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. This exception is 5 ILCS 120/2C8.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
[inaudible]